Okay, folks, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board Meeting. If I could have a -- sorry, let's -- yes, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And if I could have a roll call?
John Javonoli.
John Parpy.
John Greenan.
Lori G.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Mielsche.
Sarah Bloodso. Great, thank you. We have two upcoming meeting dates. And just to let everybody know, John Ikman wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'll be chairing and taking us through the agenda. Two upcoming meeting dates, November 19th and December 17th. And we have one set of minutes for approval on September 17th. Did everybody get a chance to review them?
I don't think we're going to do that unless they agree to the cameras.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. And I will recuse because I was not at that meeting. Thank you. All right. So the first item on our agenda is the SWF2 Fulfillment Center, limited site improvements. And just a note for everybody, we actually have two different professionals, two different applications for the same property tonight, so you're going to hear us talk about the SWF2 site twice. But we'll go ahead and have the discussion first, and then we'll move to the public hearing.
Hi, I'm Karen Wallace. I'm with Magellan Architects, and we are the architects applying for the traffic lane changes. Do I need to sign in? Yeah, okay. Do you have the presentation or the drawings?
They have them electronically, not.
Okay.
Do you have a thumb drive with you?
I don't.
Oh, because I was going to say.
I'm.
Unknown caller.
I can go through it.
Okay.
Start to explain, and I'll go see if I can grab your thumb drive.
Sure. Sorry, I'm just finishing my address here. So the scope of the work is the in and out for the trailers, for the trucks. So with the site, you have one entry to the north that comes into the site, and one entry that exits to the south. And so what basically they're doing is making some revisions to get in more camera and sensor equipment. They have a system that's called the ADLR. It's the automatic plate reader for the trucks. And what it does is it helps the guard, the employees, they don't have to go out and check every single truck. The system does it for them. And then they can just, you know, talk to the truck drivers, and all the information is automatically brought into the system. So they already have that system in place now, but what they've done is they've just made a few tweaks as far as adding some more equipment. And so to make that happen, they've had to shift the lanes a little bit. So basically, they've added a few -- they've changed some striping, and there's four lanes coming in. And that's inbound. And I believe there's four lanes -- nope, there's only three lanes going out. So they've shifted the lanes so that they can get the additional equipment onto those lanes, as well as make sure that the guard shack still has the proper clearances for accessibility, so that they're not getting too close to the shack with the equipment. And this requires adding some pads for the new equipment, as well as extending the fencing that's there now, and the gate that is there to allow for one of the entry aisles to shift over.
And as part of the equipment that you have, is that like cameras that are monitoring what's coming in? So you're seeing anybody who's entering the site through those entrances, and anybody who's leaving the site through the exits?
Yeah. It automatically scans the license plate, and it's basically like a -- what we do is we put up a curb, and then there's a tripod, and then on that tripod are the various cameras and sensors.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
One of the things that was part of the original site plan was a, I think, a notation that said that we didn't want the trucks to enter the site through Route 52, that they needed to use Patriot Way and the exit off 84. So is this equipment going to be adaptable to make sure that if you see a truck coming from the wrong direction, you'll be able to tell them, hey, don't do that again, you have to use the exit that was set?
Yeah, we're not changing how they come in and out. That's completely the same. So the same entrance, same exit, as is today. And the only shift is adding the equipment. So the lanes are staying the same, and the circulation is staying the same.
How are you enforcing your site plan requirements?
As far as the, you know, I'm looking at my site plan, and I just have an enlarged -- let me show you the site. I'm just showing the enlarged area around the gatehouse. So I don't actually see where the trucks come in off the street, unfortunately, on this plan, so I can't answer that question.
If you want to step to the podium.
Unless you.
You have to step.
So we're going to address that in our line of site planning.
Okay.
That's going to be -- that's.
This is one of our comments.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I've got some questions about the monument signs out there. Would it be better to wait for you?
Yeah, it's a little confusing. They're doing a completely separate project, but on the same parcel.
And the same area.
And in the same area. So I'm just doing the equipment for the guard shack.
So any of the paved surface that you have existing now, is that going to change from what it is now? Are you expanding upon the paved area?
The paved surface remains the same, except for the pads for the equipment. So.
So there'll be concrete, the pads?
Correct.
But again, the impervious surface, meaning the paved area, is not changing at all?
Correct. The actual drive lanes that the trucks are on, that remains the same.
Okay.
So this first plan is the inbound plan on the north. And so you have the four lanes, and so basically, the -- it's kind of hard to see without the demo plan right next to it, but the third lane, the first lane is just adding some striping. They like to show, they like to kind of lead the trucks closer into the curb, and so that's, that upper striping is just pushing them towards the curb. The second lane is where we're adding the pads for the additional equipment. And then the third lane, that's where we're pushing it back. So we're pushing it further, so that they hit those first, and then they have to -- this is just to make sure that the guard shack has plenty of clearance around it with that new equipment. And then the bottom lane is some more striping and pads for the additional equipment. And then the, that's the inbound lane. And then the outbound lane. The very top lane there, striping, and then more pads for the equipment on the top, top of the lane. And then same with the second lane, and then the bottom lane. It's pretty much all being shifted. I could show you the demo plan if that helps. Like I said, it'd be easier if they're right next to each other, because it's such a minor shift. But they're all basically outbound, they are shifting closer to the exit. And then inbound, I think, they're moving, same thing, they're moving closer to the entrance.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members at this? I know you have a lot of detail, but it doesn't feel like these are a lot of change. I mean, for this site, you're doing some new striping, you're adding a couple pads and.
We're trenching for some low voltage to get that new equipment to the guardhouse, but yeah, that's really it.
And it hasn't changed, oh, I'm sorry. It hasn't changed any emergency egress with regards to fire apparatus or?
No, the top lane in both cases is marked out as the fire lane, and that hasn't changed. The width is the same.
Bless you.
I think it's the top lane on the.
The bottom lane, I think, on the incoming.
Yeah, I think you're right. On the, let's see. On the inbound, we're showing it at the top. I'm trying to see if we even got it called out on the outbound. Existing driveline, existing driveline. I don't see it called out on the outbound, actually.
Okay. And anything added overhead that would impede something from passing?
No. Yeah, the tripods will be off the driveline, and they're only, I don't know how tall they are, but probably eight or feet or.
Be a question here.
Yes.
On the fire lane, why are you considering a fire lane? Is that a lane specifically for emergency apparatus? Or are there going to be trucks in there that we still can't get through?
There will be trucks.
So what's, that doesn't make it a fire lane any more than any of the others. Fire lane means there's no obstruction.
Right.
And as one who drives our ladder truck in there several times, I either have to weave around the trucks, or I can't get in at all.
Right.
So what are you going to do to open that lane, or open any lane up, in the event of an emergency?
Well, I think that lane that's available is for box trucks versus the semis, but other than that, I don't know, I don't know if there's a plan, to be honest.
There needs to be one.
Okay.
There really needs to be one. It's very frustrating to respond there for a fire alarm and not be able to get the firetruck in that, around the building.
Is that specific to just the entryway, or is it throughout the site?
Well, we don't have a problem once we get in. That's the bottleneck, and the south entrance, we typically would come in from 52, because most dry apparatus comes down 52. And every time I've gone in, it's been that way. I don't know, you know, the south end, the exit side, how crowded it is, you know, outbound traffic. It'd be even harder for them, because they would be coming towards us, and they would have to try and back up, or somehow get out of the way if we were coming in. But there needs to be some kind of plan, whether on a fire alarm or any emergency, that that lane is cleared out and left cleared.
Right.
Till we get there.
Okay.
You need to have a plan.
Right, okay.
Does the new equipment enable you to, like, shift the traffic if you have to?
I don't believe it's intended for that. I think, I don't know if there's signage that says, you know, the smaller trucks go to that lane, and the bigger trucks go to the other lanes. But that's more of an operations question, unfortunately, and I don't have that information. But I was sure that they could, you know, adjust as needed. I'm not, I don't know how that works with the fire alarm. I'm sure they would have access to that and be able to, yeah, I don't know how backed up it gets either, so.
Okay.
I don't know how long it would take for them to move things around.
Another question I have, are the gates going away, or are they still going to be there?
They'll still be there. They'll just be further back because of the shift.
Once again, from my experience going there on one of the alarms, the only gate, the only entrance that was available was the one with the gate. And the gates are not automatic or electric, they had to be manually unlocked and opened. They had to find a guy from the gate house, come down, open the gates so we could get in. And that's, once again, a delay.
Right, not good, not fast enough. Yeah, we're not showing any changes to how the fences or the gates function. We're just saying that it's a manual swing gate, and it's going to be extended, so there's no plan for how to, how to open in an emergency.
Say, it just, it delays our arrival.
Mm-hmm.
Could you make it an automatic gate, since all the new trenching is going in and?
Um, I mean, I think we could. For that one that's being called out as the fire lane, we could, you know.
That would help.
Which we could make a condition to the client that they make that an automatic gate.
What determines if the gates are open or closed?
I'm not sure. Again, it's operational, I don't, they don't give us that detail, so.
Think we need to talk to operations people.
Yep.
Okay.
And obviously, they have some kind of emergency plan in place, and their fire drill, stuff like that. Maybe this could be made part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Or, again, automatic, tied to the fire alarm if you have a fire, fire alarm, gate opens.
Yeah, if they have a process.
Or the fire department has a remote, right? We've talked about that in the past.
Beg your pardon?
Didn't you, doesn't the fire department have the ability to have a remote? No? To open it, okay.
I think it should be tied to.
We've done that.
Right, but not every emergency will have a fire alarm.
What about a knock box?
Talk to us with another application, is that something?
I just think it's still a delay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that means we have to stop the truck, somebody has to get out, open the knock box, open the gate. That's, yeah, I think if somebody yanks the fire alarm, the gates ought to open automatically. Or at the least, the guards, that guard shack has to be notified.
Yeah.
And open that gate.
And maybe also clear the fire lane, so that you can get in.
Yeah, absolutely. But even if, you know. Like I say, they need an operational plan to make all that happen.
Sorry? Is the guard shack manned 24 hours?
Yeah, that's, that was my question.
Yeah, yeah, and having the equipment, the new equipment, doesn't change the guard being there. So there's always.
Is the fire only there?
Yeah.
24/7?
I don't know about the 24/7.
Oh.
I just know that the, there's no change to the employees being in the guardhouse that doesn't, it doesn't, they're still there.
It has to be automatic, because your guy, I mean, your guy's not there, what are you going to do?
I don't think we're.
Run the gate?
So.
So, so do we have for large structures like this, do we have fire plans filed with the town for how the property is managed or behaves, like for ingress and for making sure that access is available?
No, we don't have to. And there's nothing with the fire district, as far as I know, either.
Not for this property, or not for any property?
For any property.
Didn't Amazon do a book before they opened?
I'd have to look on, top of my head now.
We have to check. Because there may have been some type of a package that was put together, but I don't know how detailed it was, or if it went into fire stuff.
So I think as you're putting in some additional automation and new things, you hear the concern to be able to access your site in the event that you have an emergency there.
Right.
That might be something we would condition for.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think saying either provide, you know, process that explains how you're going to make this happen quickly, or provide an automatic gate, I mean, I think that's a reasonable condition.
I think possibly both, because it sounds like the gate is one issue, but getting the trucks cleared from the ingress lane is the other issue.
Okay, sounds like maybe the fire department should meet with operations.
I agree.
On the side, and kind of come up with, yeah, some agreed upon policies and procedures in certain situations.
And I'll take that back to the board of fire commissioners, because that's who.
I think that's a great idea.
It's who should meet.
Yeah, and then I think the site plan would need to be adjusted accordingly.
So between now and next meeting, it's incumbent on the applicant to meet with the fire commissioners to assuage all their concerns, and then you can come back next month, and potentially, there could be a resolution ready, if there's a comprehensive fire plan in place.
And I also would like, there's some fencing, I guess, or gates. We'd like to have the details, how high those are, because it's unclear whether or not you'll need a variance for that. Do you have any of that?
I do have that information. They are eight feet high.
Okay, so that's, that's going to be a.
No, it's okay.
Oh, yeah, because it's industrial.
Twelve feet.
Yeah, yeah, industrial.
Do we have the detail that's?
We need the details of what they're going to look like, okay?
I think you said you're expanding the existing one, right? You're not planning to change the look and feel of it?
Correct. We would just match what the existing design is, yes.
Okay.
And I think we want to also add to that, we don't want to lose sight, it's the same site. I know we have two applications, but still with the traffic from the large vehicles entering from 52, and the litter on the site. So I think we still don't lose sight of those two issues.
That gets back to the concern I wanted to bring up about this. If you look at the sign monuments there, if you come in from 84, and you're heading towards 52, you can't see the first sign, because it's totally obscured by the fence around the retaining pond there. The second sign is fine, getting into the main parking lot, but then the sign that says "all trucks here," you don't see that, because it's totally obscured by the second sign. So I'm wondering if you need to lift those up so people can see it, because I've seen trucks come down, can't figure out where they need to turn in there, they go down to the roundabout, and circle around and come back in.
And that's been brought up, and that.
They didn't see there.
That was brought up, they put up a temporary sign, and I don't know, they actually did a permanent remedy, but that had been previously brought up to them.
Yeah, I go by there a couple times a week, and it's definitely not very clear as to where they're supposed to turn, where the trucks are supposed to turn in. And I only mention it now because I see the condition.
Yeah, I noticed the same thing.
Yeah.
And that's something that's part of your package, or is that not part of your package?
It's not exactly what we can talk about.
Okay.
And can you explain to, I guess, just for the board, why there are two separate applications for the same property?
Well, I'm not entirely sure, but the client tends to work with us on these truck packages, on the equipment packages, so I'm not sure why we have a separate team doing the other things, but they have different.
Because normally, too, whenever someone comes in with a site plan amendment, you know, there's generally a team, there could be a team, on the team, there's the architect, there's the civil engineer, there's the traffic engineer, and landscape architect, and everyone sort of works together. This is, this is a big.
I mean, we've had this happen on other Amazon projects, where there's a different team doing a different scope, for whatever reason.
Beyond that, I've never dealt with this before.
Yeah.
Right, because normally, everyone sort of, you know, on the team gets together, and then you're trying to row in the same direction, because I feel like here, we got maybe two shapes.
Yeah, this is definitely unique, and especially us being here on the same night.
Right.
So I was as surprised as you.
If we owe you rent for the conference meeting. Right, to be fair, their project is just the cameras and sensors and stuff, and ours is just the sidewalk.
We're not able to capture what you're saying for our recording, so I may just ask you to come up to the mic, if you don't mind, and say that one more time for us.
No, true.
Thank you.
So just to be clear for the board, the way the applications are split is this is just for the sensors and the entrance and exits, as you've been discussing, and then we're just here just on the sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you. I think because you are here at the same time, it will be more than likely that in the event we get to an approval, we probably have conditions, it'll look the same for both, just so that we're consistent, because we need one site plan at the end of the day. We can't have one that's diverted this way, so we're just going to try to keep you guys a little bit tied together, even though you have submitted separate applications.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from our professionals or board?
I just want to ask if you could provide me with the name of the operations person that commissioners need to contact.
Okay.
If you have a name and number.
And maybe something like this is somewhat adoptable to other sites that are similar, so that we do have these plans in place that go outside of the scope of the building and, you know, expand on the actual entrances and things that are required of them to have egress for fire safety. So this is pretty healthy.
This is our first real big warehouse of this type, where we've got, we've had these problems, so we're all learning.
So I think between now and our next meeting, you can have that operational meeting, let's figure out the fire access, and make sure that it doesn't affect where you're putting any of your equipment, or anything like that. Make sure it doesn't further affect the striping that you're proposing.
Okay.
Does the board agree this is a fairly minor amendment, once it comes back, that those questions answered, doesn't require a public hearing, or do we want?
Yeah, I think as long as there's a solid emergency management plan in place that we can work off of, then yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll stick around, just in case something comes up.
I appreciate that. I almost asked you if you would, but I don't, I appreciate that. So the next item on our agenda is a public hearing for SWF2 Fulfillment Center. Same site, different applicant representative.
Motion to open the set for the public hearing?
Yes, we have everything we need to open. I'll take the motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Tisher, do you want to speak?
Oh, that was.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
So I'll just introduce myself. I'm TJ Ruane, I'm a project attorney for the second Amazon fulfillment center application.
Peter McCabe with Lang and Engineering, representing the site civil drawings that I'll be presenting tonight.
Do we have your plan electronically, to put it up on?
Yeah, I'm going to tap this in a second, see if it'll load for me. I also have 11 by 17s of the plan set, if anybody wants.
Sure, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the public hearing, that we want them up on the screens for the public to be able to see. You can hand them down if that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything that makes this full screen?
That I don't know.
We'll go with that.
Yeah.
Good evening. As I said, my name is Peter McCabe, licensed. in terms of the cross slope, and then there is a section of new sidewalk and also, as part of that, some ramp sections with railings and meet all the ADA requirements. There is also a 75-foot length of retaining wall that was needed to make the grading There's soil erosion measures that we proposed, landscaping is gonna remain as it has been with a relocation of three plantings required to make it work. We did talk about, you know, the lighting last time, we revised the plans after our working session last month to have a note on there about the lighting, that the existing lighting meets the requirements of the minimum requirements. There was also a question about the concrete washout, and we did have that located, it may have been a little bit difficult to see, but it's within some of the trailer parking spaces temporarily, that's what, so we kept it within the site, so won't disrupt any of the flow of the site during the construction of this walkway. There is appropriate signage in terms of pedestrian crossings and crosswalks, and I touched on this at our last session, but it is a minimal impact to the stormwater management, there's very minimal increase in impervious as a result of this, and it doesn't affect the CN numbers or the times of concentration. So what you're looking at is, it's the first sheet that shows the access at the building, there's a crossing to the, across the truck court to the south side of the, south truck court, and then you run along east to west along the back of the trailer spaces, and then you have another crossing of another trailer space, and then it makes its way down the hill. So I can flip to that screen as well.
I'm sorry, did you say there's a photometric plan here for the lighting of the sidewalk?
No, there's a note on the site plan in several locations that says that the zero, that the existing levels are 0.5, which meet the standards for minimum lighting levels. So there's not photometrics in the plan set, there's a note on, to be specific, like on sheet CS 101, for example.
Yeah, so on CS 100 or CS 101, the first proposed sidewalk route has been 25-foot diameter, which might have some light.
How do you know that without photometrics?
Well, we did the, we did the photometrics.
But can't you just submit that?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Sure, you can do that. So that's...
So that's without installing any new lights at the site, this is in the existing kind of light space for the light space?
Correct. So the, the only other thing I would add to my presentation is that we did, we responded to, you know, in part to the question of the trucks by adding, by adding two signs that are more specifically, you know, the way this signage is now, it's, you know, there's a right turn arrow, but there's not something explicit that says trucks must turn right, and that's, we've added that sign to the, to the plan set, in two locations, actually.
Is that addressing Ed's comment earlier about the signs that are currently obscured?
No, that was specifically in response to Mr. Bryant's comment in his comment letter the last time, so the...
Which was?
Which was that trucks tend to either arrive from the site from 52, or, or they leave the site and they go, they try and make a left turn towards 52. So one of the things that we specifically are proposing in this revised set of plans is, is a sign at each exit that says trucks must turn right.
So that makes sure the egress is appropriate, how about for the ingress? I know we were just talking a moment ago with the prior professional that you're doing a lot of, a lot of equipment to be able to identify these trucks, to know where they are, is there a way for you to be able to see if they came in from the wrong direction?
Yeah, I don't know how those, you know, the equipment works in terms of identifying them, I know that...
You hear what I'm saying, right? I mean, I get, I'm not asking you to know how the equipment works, I'm just saying, we want to make sure that the trucks are coming in and off of 84 the way they were expected to come in and off, so we're not seeing them running through the areas of the roadways where we have schoolchildren and things like that.
Right, and the roundabout is...
I was gonna say, those signs should not only say trucks must turn right, but should say must turn right and get on Route 84, because I've seen trucks come out to the intersection at I Park Boulevard and making a left onto I Park Boulevard to down towards 52, rather than turn, turn it onto 84, I've seen that personally.
Is there a reason they would want to do that?
I don't understand why, except for sometimes GPS tells, tells people to do certain things, they don't understand the roads.
There's a traffic backup or something, yeah, GPS will do that.
Yeah, well, certainly if traffic is backed up, you know, you're gonna have to...
GPS will do that, absolutely.
Well, who controls the GPS?
But there isn't like another nearby facility or anything that these trucks are going to, and 52 is the easiest way to get there, they're just doing it because they don't know better, is that correct?
I, yeah, I wouldn't have enough knowledge to comment on that about why they would...
Whether there's a facility that's easily accessed from Route 52 near...
Not that, not that I know of, I don't think there'd be any reason why they would go from here to want to be on 52, other than it's a way to get west.
Okay.
And, you know, as far as arrivals, I know that Amazon, you know, is, is committed to communicating with its vendors to, to make it clear that the way to get to the site is, is from I Park Drive and from that exit on 84.
Yes, so the signs were intended for outbound traffic, obviously only, because by the time we catch them coming inbound, that they've come off 52, there's nothing we can do, but then there was also a component of it in our response that, that the company would provide messaging to all of the trucking vendors, that there's to be, not to be using 52 inbound or outbound, in addition to the signs.
Okay.
So that's really the only controllable measure on the books right now to mitigate that.
That's, that the facility itself could do.
Yeah. But again, so a year later, we still have it, so... Yes.
I think, Laurie, a lot of it would be, you know, resulting from traffic, I mean, there's, that section of 84 between, you know, Lion King Road and Route 9 and the bridge often sees backups from roadwork or accidents.
Yeah.
And if that's, if that's completely jammed and someone's coming out of that site, it's gonna tell them to take, you know, to take Route 9, you know, get to Route 9 and take other ways to get there.
Right.
I guess in a way, I mean, I can understand that type of event, but my understanding was we're actually seeing trucks kind of do this every day, and as a routine, and I think that's what most concern.
I see it routinely, yeah.
What's that?
I see it routinely. So how does that pattern get broken? Like, how do we come to terms with that?
I mean, the other, the other way is like to physically do something in terms of, you know, controlling when they come out, that it's impossible for them to, you know, make a left turn.
Some sort of bar over the road that's...
The signs, you know, obviously they'll be, Amazon signs will be our facility signs, and we're hoping that the signs saying all truck traffic must use this route will, we're hoping that, obviously that'll be enough.
Well, if you just tell them to turn right, that's not gonna be...
Can I, can I offer, there's probably, there's probably three things that we're talking about here, I think the signage, the must turn right is a help, it's not gonna willfully turn somebody that way if they decide they want to turn left, but I think the second component of it is what Mr. Miyoshi brought up, that the signage for the trucks to turn in, that's important to make sure that that's visible, and Scott, I know they did something, but I guess it's not, it's not long-term and maybe it's not...
I know they did it temporary, whether they made that permanent, I don't know.
I know there was an effort made, because, because you're right, the visibility, the site triangles to the monument signs unfortunately are obstructed by the fences around basins, so I think that's a second component.
We had asked them to elevate it, but they didn't elevate it, I thought that needed to be done elevated.
Yeah, I think that's something...
Albeited enough.
I think that, I think we would agree that that could be a condition, you know, to look at how to improve that, you know, of any action by the board tonight, I think that would be appropriate. And then there was a suggestion, and this came from, you know, Amazon's attorney's office, but it was in a letter that was supposed to go out earlier, and I think Jackie just maybe got it in her inbox like this afternoon, so I'm just gonna read it. The applicant, so the plan has been modified to reflect two new signs at each truck driveway exit stating "all trucks must turn right." "The applicant will also provide messaging to vendors and truck drivers reminding them of the prohibition on inbound and outbound trips via Route 52. However, we do not think it is appropriate or accurate to characterize a failure of truck drivers to abide by these measures as violations of the site plan. The actions of third-party drivers are beyond the control of the site owner or operator. If the town sees fit, we believe that it is within the town's authority to designate a portion of Patriot Way as non-commercial vehicle access only, thereby preventing truck access to Route 42 and providing the town with direct enforcement authority against violators." So, that's...
Just one other thought, has anyone actually tried, I mean, the address for the facility and the, and those, you know, Google directions or whatever they are, has anyone put that address and made sure that it brings you to that entrance? And not, and not, they're not relying on the sign, they're relying on their GPS to tell them to go in the right entrance.
I just think that, like with the point you just brought up with 84 and traffic...
No, no, I mean, I mean, like the entering, like if you're coming down Patriot Way and the entrance is there, but they might miss it because it's not adequately signed or they're not sure.
Doesn't say 100 feet, take a left.
Right, and I mean, it does, has someone actually, I mean, I haven't, I just thought of that as we're standing here, I'm just thinking out loud, but someone should make sure that that is actually accurate.
And I think too, part of the problem we're having is that the route, that, you know, the route that was proposed during the planning board, that was also studied under secret, and that was part of the mitigating conditions at this point, the sort of route that they're taking on 52, that was not studied. So it really is sort of a secret issue at this point, that, so we're hoping that, you know, you guys can work and try to get the actual applicant on board with this, because I know in other communities, we had an issue with Walmart trucks going elsewhere, and then the district manager got in touch with everyone and they redid the route, and we haven't had an issue since. So I don't know if it's with Amazon directly getting in touch with whatever trucking, I don't know if it's their own trucks or a third party.
Right, and so in, and I'm sure the letter will be circulated around, it was just last minute, but we still wanted to show up tonight, we hoped to get it out sooner, but our proposal is to do that two-pronged, where it's to put up signs, but then also for us to reach out. I think what, just having a condition, I think the proposed condition was just trucks can't use 52 or it's a site plan violation, we were looking to do more sort of a proactive approach of addressing the underlying condition, here's stuff that we can control, and, and then maybe if the town also is an idea, wants to sort of legislate the use of the roads, that's well within the purview of the town as well, but for our, what's within our control, we think we hope that the signs and addressing it with the truck drivers will hopefully do the trick.
Is there any way to do like an embellishment, you know, like where you have the crossings for the rail trail, you know, for cars to come to a stop if people are gonna cross over, you know, let's say 376, they have those signs there that have some lighted facet to them that allows people an extra bit of attention to the sign, I don't know if that would lend itself or it's allowable?
You're saying no trucks?
Or to, you know, turn...
A lighted sign that says no trucks or something like that?
Yeah, like something that's a little more than just a marquee-type sign that doesn't have...
Can we put a stop sign on Patriot Way heading north at the truck entrance?
I think drivers aren't paying attention to signs, like as a general rule.
Because they gotta stop.
Not just truck drivers, nobody's paying attention to giant, everybody's paying attention to their GPS. So if the GPS is taking you down an incorrect path, you're just going to follow it and you're gonna say, oh, well, that sign said I can't go here, but I don't know where else to go, so I'm just going to follow it. Does Amazon use its own GPS system in their trucks, or is it whatever the driver wants to use?
I, I think they use a variety of vendors, so even if they do have Amazon, you know, equipment in their own trucks, there's also other...
No, I, right.
I believe there's also other trucks that are coming, so...
So is there a way with Amazon's own trucks to ensure that the GPS is calibrated correctly to regardless of the traffic on 84, not use 52 for Amazon trucks?
We can respond to that, yeah, we can, we can look into that, I don't know.
So that would take, if that's the case, that would take care of part of the problem. The other part is obviously we don't have, Amazon wouldn't have control of the third-party GPS systems, but then that communication out to vendors and third parties would hopefully take care of another portion of the problem. But if the GPS is calibrated correctly to avoid 52 regardless, I mean, I know my GPS I can set to avoid tolls, I can, I'm positive that the GPS has to be able to accommodate that, avoid certain routes, that will take care of a portion of the problem.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that, I'm not sure if that's feasible or not.
And like with UPS, when they logistically give a driver a route, it's followed to a T.
Right.
They have to follow exactly how that route is given to them, and it's, it's demarked a very specific way for them to travel, and they can't really, unless obviously there was some kind of accident or something, but they're, they're really monitored to drive that specific route.
So with outbound traffic, the goal is that if the signs say trucks are not allowed to turn left, yes, it's an Amazon sign, but we're hoping that they look at it as if it's a municipal sign and that the trucks aren't legitimately allowed on that road, is the effect, and then the GPS would reroute. Whether Amazon can work with a vendor, whoever has the GPS data to do this, that, I don't know if that's possible, but obviously we can certainly look into it.
But when they're departing the site, they're not going through a guard shack again, they're just in the entrance, right, going through...
I mean, there's...
There's a guard shack that they exit through, I've seen them lined up behind, waiting to exit. Okay, I mean, maybe there's some method there that they're told, don't make, you know, make this specific turn.
I think the same thing for the ingress, and you know, you're, I know you're saying you can only control what's happening on your site, but your site can see how trucks are arriving and how trucks are leaving.
And that's the second problem, that signs plus the communication, I think either that's gonna be either through the guard shacks or directly to the vendors at a higher level to disseminate down, or both.
Maybe it's a routine, like a formal communication, because you could communicate tomorrow and I'm sure some of your drivers will change within a week or two, you know, I'm sure there's, so I think it just needs to be a continuous reinforcement. I think you hear the concern.
This stupid question, when, does Amazon provide a, for lack of a better word, a manifest to the trucking company of where that load is supposed to be delivered? Is that printed out for the driver? Because if it is, that's a perfect place to say, do not use Route 52.
That, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to, unfortunately, to Amazon's operations, I mean, I understand the board's concern about this issue, you know, with the trucks, but we're...
So maybe if we're speaking with operations about the fire ingress, maybe this is just... Okay. I mean, maybe there's some method there that they're told, don't make, you know, make this specific turn.
I think the same thing for the ingress. And, you know, you're, I know you're saying you can only control what's happening on your site, but your site can see how trucks are arriving and how trucks are leaving.
And that's the second problem, that signs plus the communication. I think either that's going to be either through the guard shacks or directly to the vendors at a higher level to disseminate down or both.
Maybe it's a routine, like a formal communication, because you could communicate tomorrow and I'm sure some of your drivers will change within a week or two. You know, I'm sure there's.
Yeah.
So I think it just needs to be a continuous reinforcement. I think you hear the concern.
This stupid question. When, does Amazon provide a, for lack of a better word, a manifest to the trucking company of where that load is supposed to be delivered? Is that printed out for the driver? Cause if it is, that's a perfect place to say, do not use Route 52.
That, I don't know.
Yeah. I can't, I can't speak to, unfortunately, to Amazon's operations. I mean, I understand the board's concern about this issue, you know, with the trucks, but we're.
So maybe if we're speaking with operations about the fire ingress, maybe this is just something we add to that discussion. If it's the operations folks, because I, I get, I probably aren't familiar with their process, but if they have operations folks we can talk to.
And it's safety related the same way. Cause we're very concerned because of the high school traffic. We have a tremendous amount of traffic on that road during.
And new drivers.
And, and new, new vehicle drivers, definitely. So we're trying to really eliminate that traffic.
Yeah, understood.
Especially with big trucks, that's even worse.
I guess now it comes to the, sort of the two same applications. I mean, would it be more appropriate to put, would we be able to bring at least a sidewalk application to some sort of a conditional approval with submission of, I know what you're going to talk about garbage being spread around and things like that, but we still have the application for sensors and whatever, rather than sort of hold up the sidewalk project if we're going to be looking at that and the fire at the same time?
What happens if they pull the plug on a sensor project, for instance?
What was that?
What if, what if they withdrew that application? Where does that leave us? I'm not saying that, suggesting it's likely, but what if they did? I mean, it's one project, it's one site, it's one problem.
We actually did consider, should we be combining these applications into one application? Just so that there's one discussion, one agreement. So I think that's kind of what you're, what we're struggling with right now. Cause normally when we look at a site plan, we look at it one time with a group of professionals.
Okay.
And we're driving back and forth over similar bridges here.
Right.
Between each application, so.
I mean, would the town, I know you're the board, but, and I know that there is a tie to the SECRE issue, but would the, would the town entertain taking some action in terms, in terms of designating Patriot Way, which is a town road, as non-commercial vehicle access?
That would have to be forwarded to the town.
I was going to say, we're, as the planning board, that's not within our authority to do that. We, we can certainly, if you wanted to suggest that as a solution to the town, we could certainly bring them our minutes and share the concern.
The problematic thing with that is that there's more than one commercial access. It's not just Amazon, right? There's another warehouse just down the road. So your, the prohibition would have to be after that driveway. And the mistake has already been made at that point.
So what might like conditions for the board taking action look like with regards to this matter? I don't know, I'm talking, talking like an attorney, but.
No, no, that's essentially what I was just trying to get at.
So I, I think, why don't we, why don't we table that for a moment? Let's ask if there's anyone who wants to offer comment on the application, because we are in public hearing, and then we'll bring you back up.
Yeah, of course.
So is there, is there anyone here who would like to offer comment on this application? Or the, come on, come on up. If I could have you sign in, there should be a clipboard to sign in at the podium there.
There it is.
Thank you so much.
If you don't mind giving us your name as you start your comments.
My name is Thomas Jackson. I am the, one of the assistant chiefs of the East Fiscal Fire District. They have concerns about, again, traffic flow and pedestrian flow as well. Unfortunately, there was a conflict with meetings this evening and they're presenting their fire budget and most of them are tied up there this evening. I'm the company chief of the Station 4 area, which is the first due response company to that area. We thought it would be a good opportunity to quick, share with you some of the challenges we've had since Amazon has opened its doors as far as emergency services is related. And just so you can get some general information to know how it has affected us and then how you can help us maybe by protecting some of the things, the needs that we have to moving forward. Employees and commercial traffic generate more vehicle accidents in our fire district coverage area. That's just, we're, we're looking at the numbers coming up. We did, we did pull some numbers. I went over to the fire district headquarters today and pulled some numbers of where our calls look like. And they're not even going to reflect all of those because we just pulled the numbers related to 76 Patriot Way and the calls have been generated at that location. But it doesn't account for the ones that are happening on Lion Kiln Road, Route 52, and so on. So traffic flow is really important to us, not only for emergencies there, but in general as traffic moves throughout our town. The, the high number of personnel on campus at any given time in this 24-hour period has increased the EMS call volumes exponentially. We just looked quickly, in 2023, we had just, just in Amazon alone at 76 Patriot Way, we had 30 calls. In 2024 thus far, we're up to 104 and we haven't even finished the year yet. So you can see our, our call volume is starting to increase rapidly, probably, well, not probably, but definitely more in the EMS realm. The substantial square footage of the warehouse presents a vastly larger area than most commercial structures in our town. Each fire alarm-related emergency must be met with a multi-company dispatch from the East Fiscal Fire District. And oftentimes it requires a mutual aid or drawing resources from other towns to come help us with that particular emergency to supply the sufficient manpower to efficiently mitigate a routine automatic fire alarm, a CO call, a gas odor, gas odor call, which seems to be another one of our more frequent calls there. There's just such a large area for us to cover. It takes a lot of equipment. So when we get just an ordinary call, which we would dispatch maybe a couple of pieces of equipment to, there's going to be a lot more equipment coming because we need the manpower to cover the entirety of the building. With most incidents at Amazon, we're faced with the challenge of safely performing our operations as we deal with the logistics of hundreds of people exiting the warehouse as we are entering, as well as trying to place apparatus in a parking area already accommodating by the personal vehicles that are there. In other words, we have these little runways that we can go down in between the cars and try to perform our operations while we're being streamed with, with pedestrian traffic all exiting. And again, even as Dave had mentioned, as far as the, the fire zone lanes in front of the building, oftentimes they're flooded with people. We can't even get our apparatus in there. They're trying to, again, it's trying to evacuate a building and for us to do our job, moving people and moving vehicles in a way that's efficient makes our job easier and we can get to the situation much quicker. One of our most recent gas odor alarms was called in by an unknown caller with no notification to the management of the situation. We arrived and found the building fully operational with all management and employees still inside. And one can easily conclude that if it were a significant emergency, it would have had some serious consequences. So they, they weren't even aware of the call and there was a call for a gas odor. Well, we're responding in here. Now we have a, a structure that's full of people and it's just going to lengthen our time in which we're able to mitigate that call and put people in danger. On a positive note, we have had a supervised walk-through of the facility as it was functioning. We were advised of potentially problematic areas of concern for both parties. At the conclusion, we engaged in an open Q and A to address some of these stated issues and are striving to make improvements on both sides of the equation. Our annual call volume for our volunteer fire department has exceeded 3,000 responses. Anything that you can do that can help to begin to, to reduce that number as relates to the Amazon facility and any place else in our town is greatly appreciated. So these things are important to us. We want to drive those numbers down and we want to be able to do our job more efficiently. And so traffic flow is important, pedestrian flow is important, and then cooperation as far as being able to access the fire zones, fire lanes, getting gates open. I'm sure the technology is out there. We have, we have gates on, on the Conne State Parkway that we can hit a remote. It opens it up. It's an immediate entrance for us to get on there. I think, like I said, I don't think that's, that's not something that couldn't be done. And so I, I think Mr. Palin's suggestion that we could work with the more operational ends, this isn't so much so with the engineers tonight for these plans specifically, but in general, we want you to know, we have a great concern on how we can get in and out of that facility. It has brought a lot more calls to our fire district and we want to be able to do it in an efficient, safe manner for not only the public, but also for our own people.
So you said something that resonated with me and I just want to try to understand. You've answered calls there where they've evacuated the building.
Correct.
Did that have a plan in place? Cause you, you talked about having to meander through people to get into the.
That's right.
So do they have, you know, like a school has a fire drill, they have a very, very specific plan to dissipate the people inside the building and have the ability for you to get in there and, and deal with anything going on. So did it seem like there was a plan there?
They do have a plan. I don't know how efficient that it is. In other words, we have some challenges with that. We've talked about the challenges and how they get, sometimes it's, it's just they congregate people actually within the building and don't evacuate under certain circumstances, weather-related emergencies and so on. But we have people that will just come out and then they just maybe go to their cars. Well, then we have all, they're just all in and around our equipment and it does make it somewhat problematic. We're trying to work with them to try to perhaps get them either away or have them get in their cars versus just all milling around and, and causing a problem for us to, to move through and get our job done.
But I mean, Amazon has to do the education. Town can legislate where the heck the people go. You know, I mean.
Oh, as far as internally, yes. Yeah.
Amazon owns that, right?
Right.
Like, you know, the school drills, right? The, the school is responsible for the safety of the kids. And, and so I think Amazon needs to take the responsibility here to make sure on this, under whatever conditions, that people go to X or Y place, you know, but I don't know how the town could fix that.
No, I'm not suggesting that they.
If you can meet with our, with our fire professionals, we can advise Amazon, hey, this is what we're observing when we come to your site. This is what challenges us.
Right.
It takes us longer to get through. I think they absolutely should hear what we have to say and revise their fire plan.
And, and I have those in my notes and I'm sure Chief Jackson will be at the meeting between Amazon operations if we can get them to come and the fire commissioners. Cause it is an operational thing and it has been a problem. And once again, speaking as a firefighter and a driver of one of the apparatus, on one call we went over there, the total driving lane was full of evacuees. And that's not where they need to be.
Right.
And, and the other, other times I've been there and like Chief Jackson says, they're walking out in the parking lot, getting in their cars, maybe they're going to, I got a few minutes, I'm going to run across the street and get a donut and a cup of coffee or something. And so it's definitely a problem, but once again, not necessarily something the board can address directly. But like Chief Jackson said, he wants to make you aware of some of the issues that the fire district is facing. And that's just one warehouse. We've got others that are planned and, you know, we're going to have similar problems, I'm sure. That's why I think.
30A is going to be another big one.
With the inclement weather, that, that produces another dynamic and they're out there and it's below zero. And now you've got several hundred people out there. It's, it's pouring rain. It's going to take us, it could take us a long time to get the situation mitigated. You're trying to find a gas leak in a building as large as that. It is problematic. We have multiple crews in there with multiple instruments. We have to do the roof. There's all, it takes a long time. They're going to, they could be out there for hour, hours. What do we do with them? And how do we, how do we manage that and getting them in and out? So it's, it's a problem, but we're, we're doing the best on our end. But we want to let you know in general, some of the concerns that we have as you, as you get approached by different projects such as this, that maybe you could help us out in some way.
So two questions. I agree. It's the applicant's responsibility. I'm not, I'm not, I just think our fire professionals have advice for them that they need to hear.
Right, right. I don't think the board can do anything.
I wasn't disagreeing. I just wanted to.
So hopefully a meeting with Amazon operations, you'll be able to come, you, them will be able to come back to us with some sort of updated plan for specifically traffic. I don't know that there's much we can require in terms of people evacuating from the building, but I would hope that they'll hear your concerns and your advice and things like that.
Well, maybe with a site, like just they could actually designate like people areas that are out of the way in traffic. I mean, I, I think that could actually be put on a site.
My next point was if, at a future meeting of fire advisory commissioners, you have thoughts on how future applications can be considered differently? People meeting places? We look at circulation plans. We look at, you know, can we get the fire truck here and there? Is there more that we should be considering with site plans in terms of emergency management on a project, the scope? We can learn from this moving forward if we continue to get more applications, if there's more that we should or could consider to learn from what maybe we didn't do perfectly this time, that we can do better in the future. We would be open, I think the board would be open to hearing your concerns, your feedback, things like that, that we should consider on our site plans and take into consideration with traffic and, and all of that.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I totally agree.
Anybody else who'd like to offer comment? So I have a couple of notes. It sounds like we don't have the photometric plan yet, but you have one you can provide.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. You're putting in signs for trucks turning right. Your vendor is, Amazon is going to follow up with the drivers to make sure they're informed about not using 52. You need to look at updating the signs for ingress as well. So it's, it's made clear, especially if a truck didn't follow the right path, that they understand they should have and what it is.
Correct.
We'd like to see an operations meeting put together between your professionals. Hopefully you can connect us with someone at Amazon who can have that meeting and that discussion with us. You heard the chief's concerns. I think we need to address those. I'm not opposed to actually addressing the current site plan with notes and things like that. I know future ones, absolutely, but I, I just feel like we're hearing a pretty significant concern. And I had no idea there were 104 calls year-to-date at that site, at this site. That's a lot.
That's huge.
If you want to talk anymore about those EMS calls, let me know. I'll tell you all now.
Thank you.
That's it again, Sam.
Okay. Professionals, I didn't ask if you had any other additional comments you wanted to offer with this plan itself with the sidewalks. I think we covered photometrics. Was there anything else we needed to cover?
The litter, I don't think we spoke much about the litter.
Say it again.
Litter, I don't believe we spoke much. They spoke much about litter.
So that, that's true. So we responded in our letter. What we proposed to do was we'd be agreeable to adding a condition to the site plan that the employee parking lot, which I believe as I've been kept up to speed, seems to be the source of the litter, would be maintained subject to a either parking lot maintenance plan or sweeping plan, essentially is what we're calling it. We've already elicited bids from vendors. We're reviewing those now. And I think we are, we're preparing a sweeping plan, but we just haven't had, we don't have it finalized yet.
They've solicited bids.
Yes.
And gotten some proposals from, from, from companies that do that, but they haven't, you know, put anything in place yet.
As a routine thing, not just a one-time cleanup?
Correct. Yeah, it would be an ongoing maintenance plan for the parking lot.
Okay. Are they going out to the parking lot because it's the only place where they can go take a break? Is there no other location outside? Like, is there an area where they can, can be, hang out or sit at a bench? Or are they just going back to their cars because there's nowhere else to go? And then you're getting garbage all over the place rather than in one concentrated area where they might be hanging out?
I think it was also from the trucks as well. So that's why attacking just the parking lot itself was, I think the point.
Is there a way to make a spot where people can, can go to hang out?
I, I'd have to look more closely at the, at the site plan, but I do think there, there must be like a, you know, some eating area, but I don't think they're using it. I think what they're doing is typically going, you know, taking the breaks by their, in their cars.
I think it's just.
If it's cold or it's raining, I don't know what that.
Are they using, are they using the eating? I don't even remember there being one on the site plan.
I think, I think it was just on the inside of the building is the only cafeteria or eating area. Having one on the outside would provide an option for employees.
I think that's also something we keep in mind. So, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we want to have that operations meeting before we close the public hearing? Do we want to close the public hearing pending some of these additional items? What's our preference?
I'd say, I'd say close it and have a condition, is what I would say.
I agree.
Condition a resolution, you mean, for it?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Any objections? Okay. One last call. No, no additional comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I know we've talked about a few things here. Do we want to put the decision on for the next meeting? Or, do we want to re-
Yeah, I think we need additional information before we can make the decision.
So, we'll bring you on for the next meeting for the decision. And, it'll be at the same time as we have our other professional and application in front of us. We'll, we'll try to have, keep them in sync and make sure we end up with one site plan.
Okay. So, the plan is that the approvals happen at the same time?
Yes.
But, this wouldn't be part of the public hearing? It would be a-
No, our public hearing is now closed.
Public hearing is closed. Okay.
Yeah. And, our other applicant's request is a minor site plan amendment. So, it would, it does not require a public hearing.
What is, do you know the date of that hearing?
It is November 19.
19.
And, so, just, just to recap, the additional information that you wanted to see was, at least with the ingress and egress, to have an operations meeting with the fire chief to hear their concerns so that we're fully aware.
And, you're gonna provide a photometrics plan and you're gonna revise some of the signage for the ingress. You've already provided, I think, what we asked for on the egress.
And, the sweeping contract plan, right?
Oh, for the, yes.
Parking lot maintenance.
The plan.
Yeah, the parking lot litter maintenance-
Yeah.
Agreement.
Yeah. Because the operations meeting could change the site plan.
Right. Okay. Would that necessitate reopening the public hearing? Or, are we too hasty in closing it?
I think if it's, it would likely be a minor change. So, but, I think we just need to prove that we can get access to the trucks somehow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on, actually, we had, we had a decision on our, on our agenda. We normally do those first in our meeting. Do we have someone here from Hampton Health?
Yes.
Do you want to come on up? Or, it just takes us a few minutes. You were, we just have the resolution for you. If, if the board doesn't mind, why don't we take care of that next? And, we'll go to the resolution.
Hi. I'm Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design. And, this is Dwayne Hampton. He's the applicant.
I don't know if Scott's a pastor.
And, I think you're, you're on tonight specifically for decision. Have you made any changes to your plan since we last spoke?
No.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members before, or professionals before I offer the resolution?
No.
Okay. So, our amended resolution of site plan approval for Hampton Health Wellness and Aesthetics, located at 2543 New York State Route 52, offered by Planning Board member Lori G. Whereas, the applicant is applying for a change of use from a realty office to a wellness and aesthetics center. And, whereas the applicant proposed minor changes to the site plan, including parking lot striping, installation of handicap parking spaces, an ADA loading zone, construction of ADA RAM, and replacement of freestanding sign. And, whereas no public hearing is required for the minor site plan changes, whereas the action is a type-two action under SEAKER and no further SEAKER review is required, be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants amended site plan approval as shown on the Hampton Health Wellness and Aesthetics prepared by Hudson Land Design PC dated September 30th, 2024. Any additional conditions or anything needed? I'm not aware of any. Okay. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Richard. And, votes as follows. Ed?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
John Greenan?
Aye.
And, John Gio?
Aye.
Thank you. And myself-
And me.
And Sarah.
Oh, I apologize, Sarah. Sorry. I wrote "I." Sorry. Hi, Sarah. Hi. Thank you.
She's still there. She didn't run out.
Not, not intentional. I assure you. All right. The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We didn't chase her out yet.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
No worries. God, I was doing so well.
Your story.
All right. Doing great, Lori. Next, next item on our agenda is for, excuse me, Paradise Preserve subdivision at 12 Deverly Lane.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the members of the board. Rick Bolander, the civil engineer on the project, accompanied tonight by the owner, Mr. Pete Monalion. Just wanted to take advantage of tonight and just give a status update on the project. The updated septic plans were submitted to the health department. And, at the end of July, I've had interim discussions with the health department. No major concerns. We don't have approval yet from them. I'll keep following up just to get, get an idea of when that will come. We hope shortly. As I said, just in the interim discussions, there really hasn't been too many major concerns. And, we have since received two thorough comment letters from Nelson Pope Voorhees and Renia Engineering. The Renia Engineering comment letter was focused on the stormwater. I had a chance to review both today. It's a lot of cleaning up and just clarification on, on the engineering side. You know, boring stuff that I love, but, yeah. So, it's really just cleaning that up. We'll have all those addressed before the next submission deadline with a letter just summarizing how it was addressed. I did notice, one of the, one of the main concerns was about NOI, the NOI coverage per lot. Since the original submission, it was, with the original submission, it was one SWIP for the entire property. My intent was to split it up per lot as each lot will have its own system. Each system will have its own maintenance agreement, which will be the responsibility of the owner of that lot. So, just, it was my intent to simplify things just to have an NOI and a SWIP per lot, per the owner of each lot, instead of having one SWIP, which would have one maintenance agreement, but with different parties responsible for the maintenance of the stormwater practices on each lot. There was a comment about one SWIP for the project. And, we could, I could incorporate that somehow and obviously do one larger design or one larger drawing for the existing conditions and proposed conditions that can be included in the SWIP. And then, I guess, do one umbrella SWIP. I don't know how that would work, but I'll obviously coordinate that with the reviewing engineer, with Mr. Rich Renia. And, there was another concern just about the further subdivision of the larger lots. Most of the lots are about four acres. There's two lots that's 15. And, there's one that's 62. There is no intent to further subdivide those larger lots. Obviously, there's some, several environmental constraints, wetlands, steep slopes and whatnot. So, there is really no intent to further develop those lots. Again, just prior to, and I believe the, the next deadline is Halloween, the 31st. So, both of these memos, updated plans will be submitted, addressing all comments in both of these memos with an associated letter, just to simplify how everything was addressed. It was addressed in this area. And, that's where we are right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I think, did we want to talk, was there any more that we needed detail regarding the SWIP or the watershed, the DEP watershed or anything like that?
Yeah, there's a lot of detail. So, we roughly had about 30 comments. The general part of the SWIP, of the SWIP that we were saying was, we need to look at the project as an overall, because that's what triggers the overall disturbance and triggers what you have to do for your treatment practices. So, we need to see it overall. We do think that there is an avenue if they want to break it up into individual lot owners, because we have to be practical, that this number of lots is probably not going to be developed by one large developer that probably gonna sell the lots. And, in, and separate builders will be building those. So, it does make sense to put everything on the individual lots. But, however, the overall area has to be looked at for treatment. We do have a comment about DEP. We do believe that they're gonna require DEP stormwater permit as well, that they're triggering that based on the amount of development that they're doing and disturbance. And, then, we appreciate the fact that you recognize that there is a lot of organization and detail that needs to be brought together. But, we appreciate that you're, I think it looked like you're the third engineer to kind of pick this all up. So, there are a lot of pieces and parts.
Lot of copying and pasting and putting things together.
So, if you can pull everything together so we can see everything, the wetland boundaries, the flood plains, and then, once we see all that, then we can, you know, really kind of look at it as a whole. So, that would be very helpful if you can do that. Another important piece was cut fill analysis, as we've seen with other projects. Depending on how much fill that each lot needs, it may trigger the need for another permit. So, we want to see what that is and get that identified, you know, right in the beginning before you get too far down the road. I think that was, that pretty much sums up the comment letter.
Okay. And, do we need to see, because it's in the watershed, do we need to see the SWIP before we can schedule public hearing so that we know that there isn't gonna be any additional, like, lot layout changes or anything like that?
I think we'd like to see, you know, what, what they've put together and maybe even see that they've submitted it to DEP. So, at least we know that that part's been put together and it's, it's been sent off. Kind of like the health department approval as well. In addition to the health department approval, they need DEP approval on the septic as well, too.
Okay.
With your plan, is the intent to keep each management on an individual lot that there's no cross easements between property owners? Absolutely. Yeah. That's just, there's a lot of land. I don't see a reason to cross and do the easements. It just adds a whole nother layer to it that I think we're able to avoid.
We circulated for lead agency on this one? Are we ready to declare lead agent?
So, Michelle's recused on this one.
We did. Certainly. And, we hit our, we hit our mark. We're, we're good to declare. Okay. Before I forget, do I have a motion to declare the planning board lead agent?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is there anything, any other questions or comments from board members or professionals? Do you need anything else from us? Any other questions for us?
All set. Like I said, the, the comment letters are great, too. This will kind of outline everything. We have a, a good direction now.
Okay. Great.
See you in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is the I Park Warehouse Development and Water Tank Relocation on East Drive.
Good evening. I'm Joe Cottner with I Park. I thought it would be very helpful to give the board an update. We, we, after a number of months, we had some very good news come out. We, for a little background, we had Lidl, you know, the, the major food group. And, in a meeting in May, we were in DEC with the whole room of their consultants. And, at the meeting, DEC told Lidl that because of the landfill that was purportedly on the site, that they would have to put subsurface soil vapor and a number of other remedial measures for the building. It was gonna cost about $4 million. They also said that this was gonna take quite a long time. And, the news was very discouraging. Ironically, there was no evidence in the DEC that there were, to document the landfill. So, it was closed in 1995. But, the head of landfill for New York State said, if they designated a landfill, it must have been a landfill. So, something must be there. So, that was in May. And, Lidl was greatly discouraged because of that statement. And, it was gonna cost, I think it was about $4 million to put the vapor barriers. It's an 800,000 square foot building. So, it kind of sent everything sideways. And, I appreciate that your board has been patient, even allowing us to, to continue. But, just yesterday, and we'll be submitting this, we received the soil testing and subsoil testing that was required by the DEC because there was no information. And, ironically, IBM, who probably has a room this size full of documents, had no, no records of this so-called landfill, how it was closed, what was there. There was a little urban legend that it was the construction debris. They moved it off. But, anyway, the report shows that there's absolutely no evidence of any contamination at the site at all, at the landfill site, you know, not the entire site, which was kind of shocking. It cost about $82,000. We were distressed, you know, at the meeting and everyone was very upset. But, we just received this report and we're due to meet again with DEC. And, the, the recommendation of this report is that not only should the entire site, it's about a 54-acre site. It's one of the lots that never had any operations on it, but that the landfill should also be delisted. So, we're optimistic because in the end, when we were working with Lidl, not only were they dis, very distressed with the cost of a soil vapor and subsurface vapor system for a building of that size, but then, they've said, well, we're in the food business. We don't want to be involved in a site that's is so-called contaminated. We have a public image, you know. So, this is kind of a, an injection of fresh energy for us. And, we, I just wanted to say that your board's been patient. And, I know you're engineers. We do have some update on some of the comment letters. You know, we received one on traffic. We, we have AKRF has produced a response. We'll just submit it. We're not looking to bore, you know, or get into some of the details. And, we also have some comments on architectural and some other things. But, I thought it was very important, since your board has hung in with us, that we shared with you this news on the site. So, we're meeting, I believe, and the supervisors meeting with DEC at the end of this month. And, we're, we're trying to get this thing back on track. So, I just wanted to report that firsthand. It's hot off the press. But, our intention is, and we still believe we have a, a good shot to recapture the tenant. So, what our, you know, our path is, and, and we've been working with the town. We have some issues relating to the water system, which is not the topic tonight. As Scott, town engineer knows, we've been working on something. But, until this was cleared up, we, we didn't want to overstrain your resources. You know what I mean? But, this, this was sort of great news and, and it was a bit of a hunch for us to sort of persevere. You know, it took the DEC like three months just to approve our sampling plan, you know. So, it's kind of terrible that, you know, to try to redevelop the site that was formerly industrial, that one has to fight so hard. And, frankly, you know, IBM hasn't helped, you know, in that regard either. But, we're, we're trying our best. But, I just wanted the board to know that, that it's our intention to sort of go through and finish this approval process with you. We're, you know, we're almost there. We know we have some work to do. And, what we'd like to suggest, in addition to, I have our architect, George DiStefano, and Walter Cubo from La Bella here. They've, they're gonna give a little update on some of the comments that you made. But, then, it would be our suggestion, if possible, to maybe have a work session with some of the engineers to talk about some of the other issues like the water and things a little, a little more complicated, just to get a little better direction. But, that, that's really, the purpose of tonight was to give you that update, which, you know, for us, it was good news. But, thank you.
Can I just ask you, before you step away?
Yeah.
The, the fact that it might be delisted, does that also remove the need for the monitoring wells? Or, were they for a different reason and different-
They're for a different reason. So, the monitoring wells are to delineate the, the groundwater. So, to make sure that it's not going off-site. not going offsite.
Okay.
You know, so, but the monitoring wells were never really an issue. The problem was that we kept getting checkmated, because for whatever reason, Lidl at the time felt their footprint, they couldn't like cut out the puzzle piece of the landfill, right? So we tried to say, just go around the landfill, but they wouldn't do it, you know, and it was important for their plan. So the moving of the monitoring wells is all right in all the, and with the DEC, that was never an issue, was, you know, we'd have to locate them, you know, there was a cost to relocate.
But this part, the landfill doesn't eliminate the need for them, that's what I just wanted to try.
No, it doesn't eliminate the need. But what's interesting, and I think it's important for the board, I think there are 51 monitoring wells, and I'll confirm this, but I think only one of them or two of them have any hits. They're on the sort of western border and the hits are like 100 parts per billion. So they're nothing, they're just trace evidence of it. So the site, which we call native, because it never had any operational, is a site that shouldn't be subject to, you know, these, some of these restrictions and certainly the fear of, you know, and without having, you know, we still can't figure out how, nor IBM or the DEC had any records of a fully listed capped landfill. You know, that's a pretty big, you know, for the department to take that kind of a step, you know, declared a landfill, and it's, remember the site's a RECA site. So it was like a landfill site that was determined to be a landfill under RECA permitting, which is a pretty involved process and requires some serious amount of detail. You don't just say, can you make this a landfill? So they must have went through the process, but we were desperate to get the information and neither IBM. So we were, in the end, frankly suspicious, because it could have either been something really bad or something really good, you know? We didn't expect, but anyway, I thought that was at least good news. And we hope this, you know, we want to thank the board for hanging in there with us, but we're going to try to persevere and we think there's still a good outcome here if we can just finish it all.
Walter, you want to?
Yeah, sure. Aye. Good evening, everyone. Walter Cubo with La Bella Associates. Again, I guess I would like to thank you also for patience. I'm a new engineer to this project. I've been reviewing the record comments and the Bowler engineering plans and reports. And what we have been able to do is address some of those comments, primarily landscaping. We were able to create some landscaping plans identifying where the 25-foot buffers are, the required buffers and 10-foot buffers, and added some species list and included some of the taller trees that were recommended. So I think we've, oh, and also the parking, you know, the tree planting within the parking lots, we've added those. I see George is calling up the plan now. Generally, just trying to get some of the comments out of the way, understanding that there's still more work to be done. Joe also mentioned that the traffic comments, and we recently, just today, got a response letter from this traffic engineer, AKRF, so that will be submitted. Yeah. We really would like to have a meeting or workshop with the board to kind of figure out what really are the next steps, particularly with respect to the remaining comments.
No, I'm sorry if I should know this, you were in front of the town board for the special permit. Is that issued now? And so we're just in the site plan completion, is that correct?
The special permit has not been issued.
It's not been issued.
They wanted to wait until year four.
Okay.
Which finished, I believe that was the process.
Okay, that's fine.
I was just going to kind of briefly discuss, and I can, you know, without getting into all the individual sheets, which you already have. That's it.
And I can just give a brief overview of the architectural components of the site. You'll see that in the landscape plans submitted by La Bella, it does call out significant landscaping across the site, which helps to kind of soften and buffer the building. There's also significant existing landscape around the edge of the site, particularly on the exterior limits of the site to help screen the building. So these are some images from the previous application that was submitted for the same site. We're showing specifically the ones that show the site from the outside of the campus. And you could see how the scale of the building might be shown behind some of that existing More on the materiality and kind of design components of what we're proposing now. This slide is just meant to show some kind of more typical references for architectural design related to industrial or warehouse buildings. So you can see there's some component of glass typically for an entrance lobby or office at the corner of the building, metal panels, as well as precast concrete used throughout. And then obviously, a series of loading docks shown on the two images on the right. So just kind of to make a more specific point of that, what we're proposing as of now is a combination of insulated metal panels, concrete, precast concrete panels, and also glazing mainly at the office corner.
And I think we've not referred you yet to the ARC, our Architectural Review Committee?
No, not this, not this application.
So are you ready for that? Are you, it seems like you've done a lot of work here with the building itself?
Yep. Yeah, we're ready for that conversation.
Can I get a motion to refer this application to the ARC?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, thank you. That'll give you the ability now, you need to go to them and get some feedback.
Great, thanks. So yeah, I mean, that's all we had from the, you know, the various sheets that were submitted. If there's any further questions, we're happy to answer them.
Any other questions or comments from board members or professionals?
I mean, I think the only thing I would say is that we just had a bunch of comments on a previous warehousing facility, so maybe we can learn from some of the things that we, we were discussing earlier.
Okay. So I think if you were listening to the prior application, we're probably going to want to make sure we have a decent fire plan and operational plan for where people would go in the event of any kind of an...
Yeah, just following up on that, we had been briefed by the chief in the fire department on a previous meeting, but we understand some of the stress that some of these warehouses can put on the emergency services in particular. And when you hear the order of magnitude of the calls relative to the rest of the town and the village, it's inordinate and puts an unfair burden. So, you know, in I Park, as you may know, we have our own fire department as well that services for emergency services. But there's been some choppiness between that and the town's fire department. So we mentioned that in the next building, because Frido Lay is coming down the pike, which, you know, we spoke to the fire department and that's, they're concerned with some of the same issues. So we were talking about how to better coordinate the onsite fire department to take some of the burden away and make sure the communication is there, because obviously, what's happened on the west campus is not been good.
And, well, and I think we all learn as we go. I think the important thing here is we, employees need to know where they're supposed to go if they're leaving the building in the event of an emergency, so that they're out of the way of the fire equipment.
Yeah, the back, you know, the whole emergency evacuation and all those type of things. So we have worked with a program, and Pepsi's doing their own. We're not, you know, in any way involved with them. But for the application, we have had at least a preliminary discussion on how we could use the local, you know, onsite fire department to answer a number of those, to sort of reduce the number of calls.
Okay.
First of all, my understanding that the Global Families IBM Fire Department will not respond to buildings that were not part of the original campus. And secondly, they are not equipped and prepared with basically a two-man staff to respond to anything more than minor emergency. Now, they have gone to Frido Lay a couple of times. We were surprised, but it's still within our township and we are still dispatched regardless of them.
Yeah, that's 100% correct. So they're not going to Frido Lay.
So we're still going to go. All that, all that equipment that the chief was talking about is still going to be on the road for a fire emergency at that facility.
I think the hope was that with better communication, that there was over 100 calls and things like that, that if there's a better way to communicate, that at least some of the calls could be assessed not to be essential quicker, so you can basically eliminate the amount of particularly emergency calls. But you're certainly the expert, we don't pretend to be. But I think that's what the discussions we had.
I mean, one, one possible solution is to have your own onsite fire brigade for your building. In my previous life, I was the chief of a fire brigade for an industrial complex, and the outside fire department was not called unless we had certain parameters with them. They weren't called, because I had a staff of volunteers basically within the building that could respond and mitigate chemical spills, fires, medical emergencies, that kind of thing we could handle within ourself. And we were trained and knew enough to be able to call the outside fire department if they were needed. So that's a possibility, especially on the medical end.
I think you're right, yes.
Well, no, back here, mostly the calls to Amazon or medical, and probably many of them could be treated in-house and, you know, without intervention from our ambulance service, so.
That's what I think that they felt the opportunity was, to eliminate a lot of the medical calls, because I don't remember what the numbers, it was over 100, but I think over 60% of medical calls are something like that.
More than that.
That's what I'm saying.
Probably more like 90, 95%.
Right. And both of them are for total pain at three and they were furious.
So we couldn't be more supportive. Because believe it or not, somehow the calls...
And I think we're all volunteers.
Yeah, and believe it or not, some of the calls in our, come to some of the property managers and there was, you know, there's just, sometimes it's just employee dissatisfaction too. So, you know, you can't be a therapist for everybody. But we think there is a program that we can engage, particularly on the medical side, and I think we should leave the fire to the professionals with very respectful...
And I think, I think that would solve, a big, big part of the problem is with the medical, the medical side of it.
Well, thank you, we'll certainly...
Let's make sure we also share that to the other applicant when they have that, when you have the ops meeting, because that's, yeah.
Good information.
Good information. Anything else you wanted to share?
No, I think we just want to suggest that if we can move this forward, we just still don't want to lose. And even if we get some sort of contingent approval or something, just to, we want to try to demonstrate to the, to...
I think you're still working on a few of the reports. I think we're still in the process. We just recently received a couple of reports from you, and so we need a little...
No, no, we're not suggesting, but I'm just saying, but we just want to give the board what our roadmap is, is with this news on the environmental, you know, we want to just get back in and just show them that this is a good site for them.
If you're able to share that report with, with the planning office as well, we'll make it part of our record. So if there's ever a question in the future, we'll have that documented.
We're going to submit it. We just wanted to, we just got it literally, I didn't even have it yet the other day, Scott, when we met, so we just got it in. And it, it's a good conclusion, and I think we're hopeful that we're going to make sure when we meet with the regional head, that we just confirm that everyone's on the same page before we do that, and then we'll get it in as a part of the record, so.
Joe, let me ask you, does the DEC have to approve the monitoring well plan? I'm sure you're going to propose in terms of where you might replace them.
Yes.
So are you going to do that, like concurrently with this?
Yeah, we submitted, the wetlands permit's been submitted, and the monitoring plan, it almost takes on a different meaning though, Scott, because moving the wells specifically, you know, not having the landfill as some sort of...
But there's other contamination here beyond the landfill.
No, there's the groundwater, you know, that's under the whole property, if you will. So it just changes the dynamic and makes it a lot easier frankly, because all we have to do is deal with the borders and not cut out, because they probably had, I think there
They still have to bless that, whatever plan, right?
But now that they have this, it makes their job, you know, you can say this is the eastern boundary, not we have to cut out this pie shape and then speculate as the groundwater, you know, there was all sorts of calculations related to the landfill that complicated it.
Gotcha.
But we'll try to simplify and come back to you, your board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was the last item on our agenda for tonight. We covered the decision a bit earlier. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If I say to close the public hearing?
Public hearing, we have a meeting.
Planning board meeting, yes. There we go. Thanks, everybody.